We have a quorum. Budget Committee, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will also say I apologize to the videographer, but this is the 4th of February 2020. This is our starting evening with our regular Budget Committee meeting. And at 6:30, we will start our official budget hearing. So we'll begin with public input. I'm forthcoming, we'll move on to the approval of the January 21st minutes.
I saw nothing to correct.
No.
All right.
I move that we approve the minutes of the January 21st meeting as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved to a second, and do we have any other discussion? Very well then, all votes in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pro, pose. All right, I have nothing for Chairman's comments right now, but on the outstanding warrant articles. We have already, we've already had one vote at our last meeting on these, but there are a couple that we still need to have, still need to have determination made by the Budget Committee. And the first one would be Article 11. Now we'll read that article. "As the Sees of Town will vote to raise the appropriate sum of $27,000 to be added to the previously established fire rescue department's SCBA, bracket self-contained breathing apparatus equipment capital reserve fund. It has been recommended by the Board of Selectmen two to one, and the Budget Committee can be determined."
How much money was in that thing?
Lots.
Why? Have we had to put in $27,000 in for a year?
We have done, but last year we didn't because we had the library in Morner's. We can press them, so we're making up a little bit of a shell.
So this begs the question, how many more years do you think we really need to have this be completed so it can be ready for?
It's 2021 or 2022 that they're going to buy.
Okay.
And I believe that they'll try to make it so that they will come out even when they need to buy their equipment.
This will show the CIP, right?
Yeah.
Do we have any motion there?
I move that we approve Article 11 as written.
Do we have a second?
All second.
We're moving to a second, do we have discussion on this? Other than a few questions over here, sort of. Anything, all votes in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose. And the second article that we still need to discuss was the Union Warf, which is?
Seventeen.
Yes, Article seventeen, I'll read that. "To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate sum of $2,500 for the permitting fees designed for repairs to Union Warf." The Selectmen have approved this three zero. And we need to make our decision on this.
Right, this will complete the design permitting for repair of the warf. We've got three different, or three different options in that design. And we've got preliminary approval or agreement with DES not needing a grant and right to, we may end up getting or applying for anyway. And then this, the warrant to do the repair will come in 2021. That's our expectation.
Is there any preliminary cost estimates?
It's running, the costs run from $200,000 to $300,000 to $5,000.
For purpose of the topic, could you explain perhaps what the grant and right means?
Well, back when DES came into being in the sixties, there were grant and rights issued to different places. So the state took ownership of the lake bed, put in the lake. For whatever reason, Union Warf didn't participate in that, even though Union Warf's been there since the mid 1800s. So DES was unable to find a grant and right, which is issued by the government council. Their first position was we couldn't extend any amount on either side without having to pay $200, but fine for impacting the lake bed. So they backed off on that a bit, and they've given us a six inches on each side of increased impact. And then waived the $200 of line. But I think, you know, my, my position, although the Selectmen will learn on it, but my position would be that we try to go forward with a grant and right through the government and council so that years from now, we'll have to do this again.
Okay.
That issue. Part of the problem was Lake Lowell came up from the time the warf was built. And one of Psaki Woolen Company or somebody like that, it's one of Psaki something, owned the dam and lake port, and they actually raised the lake level. So at the, somewhere in the middle of the rubble warf that's currently there was the original lake level, and then it came up three or four feet. And the extension was built. And one extent, or the last extension before Union Dock was built in the twenties. So we have a lot of historical information about having done the lake bed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay then.
Do you know, is the design going to be a concrete dock? Is it, is the design of the dock, is it going to be concrete, is it going to be wood?
Well, we have three different options. One is to rebuild it in kind, which doesn't, is the most expensive way to do it. The pilings that are there are cabled together underground. The least expensive is sheet piling. And even if you add wooden cladding to the sheet piling, it's still quite a lot less expensive than, than rebuilding it in kind. So we'll have a bunch of meetings on it before we make up our mind. We need to get the permitting and the design.
Currently equipped dock, is it?
Kind of.
Yeah.
I move that we approve Article seventeen as written.
I'll second that.
We're moving to a second, do we have any discussion on this? Very well, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, so that takes care of our work on warrant articles for right now. Next is a vote on the 2020 estimated revenue, and I don't know why we necessarily have this as a, as a vote other than just we're acknowledging the figures provided by the Selectmen.
Well, the Selectmen's number and year number are different.
For revenue?
Oh, I'm sorry, we haven't yet voted on Article twenty-two yet. Which is the closed budget.
Well, that's coming, that's coming down, I'm just, I'm going by agenda, which is number seven, which is a vote on the 2020 estimated revenue. Yeah.
So.
So you want to talk about the revenues a little bit?
The revenues are down from last year primarily because the land use change. Taxing the thirty-one, it's $50,000 last year, cut it back to ten. The payment of the taxes is downward, it's supposed to be at twelve. This one, this is there, the block rate's there. And it's a little confusing because last year we had the library capital reserve fund coming in as revenue. And our department income is essentially the same. And we've taken $5,000 out of the, we have the pound balance for. Contingency, I'm sorry. So the total revenue for 2020 is $1,261,900. The revenue for nineteen.
Oh, is that the new?
Just said that.
Oh, I don't have that sheet, I just have this sheet. Oh, here.
Estimated revenues from last year is $2,722,166. But of that, $910,000 was library capital reserve money. So the net difference is $91,515. So the revenue's down for last year. The operating budget for this year is down. So the net difference between revenue and expense nineteen to twenty is $45,115, which is exclusively available, a drop in revenue.
That was forty-five ago?
Forty-five thousand nine hundred thirteen. That's my head scratching, hoping that's pretty close.
Very.
And that leaves us with an unreserved fund balance of nine hundred seventy-two. Right. Nine hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-four. That shouldn't be too much of a stretch to balance the budget year to year. All we'd have to do is take forty-five thousand out, probably do a little more than that in October.
Okay. Well, this is on the agenda of voting, I don't know if we necessarily have to vote on it, we're just acknowledging the numbers that have been presented to us by the Selectmen. Moving on then, the review of the MS.
Sorry, they didn't tell me that revenue had to be voted upon by the Budget Committee, I'm not sure of the reason. I'm not sure of the reason, sorry.
And I would, I would entertain a, I would entertain a motion to accept the Selectmen's figure for the operating revenue of the, for 2020, of $1,256,900. It's been moved, we have a second.
I'll second.
Further discussion on this? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose. Moving on then to the review of the MS 737. Anybody jump out, anybody? Anybody picking at it? It was me.
No surprises.
I didn't want to go line by line by line through the budget that I did, one of them did kind of like that. Did not show any other, no review during the meeting. Okay, next thing then would be, how long have you, your wonderful draft?
So there aren't any surprises in the draft either, if you look at this year's, twenty-five percent for the fire department, sixteen percent on budget after place, thirteen percent for construction, and fifteen percent for highways. And the rest was, the biggest one was the executive and financial admin, which is, a good chunk of that is insurance, legal fees, the auditors, outside contacts for the auditors, the, what do you call it, appraiser. Looking by expense type, no surprise, fifty percent is salaries and budget. And fifteen percent is administrative costs. Looking at the five-year history, everybody has gone, has ticked up with the exception of the highway, which has ticked down slightly.
Ticked down as a percentage?
As a dollar amount. The highways, last year was five oh three. The actual was five oh, highway, highway.
Five thirty-one, you said?
Five thirty-one. I will go home and look at that, because it is a good draft.
Or is this a percent of the budget?
Of the budget.
Did the highway department's budget last year have extra money?
I'm sorry, Mary, I can't believe.
Did they have extra money put into the budget?
There was extra money put in at the town meeting. They didn't overspend their budget this year, or nineteen.
Would that, would that number, chip with the extra money, be the six twenty-five?
It is, it was last year was six twenty-five, this year it's six oh four.
Six oh four.
So it is okay.
It is.
I was looking the wrong way.
It's a plastic transfer station.
Well, although the transfer station does put money back in the till, you just don't see it in their expense line.
Okay. I guess then we have a, next will be a Selectmen's update?
What are we doing? I think we're dying, we've got, I think we do have to vote on the total budget before, on the night. We took your vote on the, the classifications of roads. We eliminated that vote count from the warrant because you didn't need to vote on it. And we were in a dilemma about voting ourselves, although we sent a letter to each of the applicants telling them what we needed when they presented their warrants, because Lilian wrote we needed conditional approvals. We had to figure out if and how much improvement needs to be made on that road. And I'm going to be very careful for that. And Grand Farm wrote in their warrant, they thought their agreement could do the upgrades there. And the language is sort of bright, but they're going to take a second for a paper.
So will both those warrant articles appear on this year's warrant?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, but without approval of Selectmen or Budget Committee?
Right, and then at the, in the letter that I sent to them today, we asked them to recognize the budget from the warrant of Selectmen for their approval. And then we can do, do the way it's supposed to. That's about it, we're going to have another, we're going to have a warrant article, I believe, about the sale of tax, property taken for taxes, we visit that issue. We had, I don't care, was there any revenue involved in that sale we just went and did? I don't think there was.
No.
It was supposed to be covered with the taxes, or with the, the property changed hands. And we saw it, and our attorney saw it, as within the scope of our authority. But we need to clean that up just a little bit more, because it's not anymore of that. Other than that, we go to work, give it a day, and struggle.
All right, preach, please, son.
Yeah. That was that.
We'll visit them, we'll see them.
Well, that's it, then I will, I will declare that we are not going to be at recess until 6:30, where we will reconvene for the public hearing for the overall budget. Okay.
You're on.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are now reconvening our Budget Committee meeting, because this is the official budget hearing for the 2020 Town Borough Budget. How we're going to work this evening is I'm going to go through each line item, give you last year's numbers, this year's numbers, and any significant changes, and then of course, if I have any questions from anybody on a particular line item, we'll be happy to answer them. At which point, at the end of the, then we're going to go over the warrant articles. And we will, of course, at the end of the meeting, we'll be voting on a budget to be presented at the town meeting. Before we start, I'd like to beg your indulgence a little bit. I started doing my notes yesterday, and I said, well, I've done enough, I've looked at a lot of numbers, I'm going to finish them up this morning. And as I took my reading glasses off last night, which I kind of need to do everything in my life, they came apart in two pieces. So I'm working with my backup reading glasses, which were now about one half prescription ago. So if the number doesn't come through the way you're looking at it, and your number's like, now my grenade here, tell me it was not oversight on my part, it was just an accident, no vision. So starting off with our first line item, which is the executive line, that's, last year was a hundred and five thousand, six hundred eighty-three. This year's a hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and four. This was dealt with on October 29th with a seven zero vote by the Budget Committee. These lines, of course, are for the administrative salary and payroll, payroll expenses for the administrative assistant, administrative secretary, selectman, and moderator. Okay, then moving on to forty-one forty, which is the Townburg's budget. Last year was eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four. This year is ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-one. This was dealt with on October 29th as well by a seven zero vote. The significant increase this year was the fact that we have four connections we have to fund this year, as well as the fact that the state of New Hampshire has mandated that we get a new printer for the motor vehicle registrations, and they are shifting responsibility to the town from the state for formally provided and maintained units, so they put in $500 for a new printer. Number forty-one fifty is financial administration. Last year was a hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. This year is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-three. This is for tax collection, videotaping of all the meetings that Joe does, paying the auditors, and for computer software and support. Okay, number forty-one fifty-two, which is the revaluation of property. Last year was eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, this year is forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. This was, what's that?
Forty-six thousand, two twenty-four.
As I told you, it was a. Okay. This was an October 29th vote as well, by seven zero. Of course, the revalued, the total revaluation of the town has been completed. This is now for, going back and doing the portion that we do on an ongoing basis every year. No questions? Number forty-one fifty-three is the legal line item. Last year was fifty-seven thousand, five hundred. This year is fifty-seven thousand, six hundred. This was a five-one vote on November 12th. The biggest increase in legal line item this year was for the planning board. And this is due, this is due to some very complex and ongoing subdivision questions. Okay. Next one is forty-one fifty-five. This is the personnel administration line. Last year was six hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars, this year it's six hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six.
How did you get that to go down? Were it less employees or something?
I mean, it was fifty-three weeks.
Yes, well, it was.
Oh, okay.
I really should have prefaced this by, by saying that the two thousand, twenty thousand and nineteen numbers were based on a fifty-three week payroll. This should have forced it back to another payroll, or a regular fifty-two week payroll. And, you know, and so things like Social Security, the Hampshire Retirement Fund, our payroll drift. So that's why the numbers bounced and dropped down.
Health insurance did get down to seven thousand.
We originally voted on this, on this line item on December 10th. And at that point, it failed by a four to three vote. And it was the most discussed line item, anything during the entire budget process. Several members of the Budget Committee had ongoing questions about employee participation in healthcare costs as prices continue to rise. We realize the Selectmen are in a difficult position, but we also felt there's something that's going to need to be dealt with down the road on this. So as a Budget Committee, we have agreed that we are going to do a study on the matter, and we're going to give recommendations to the Selectmen well in advance of the 2021 budget cycle. We figured, we think it has that level of importance to the community. On the revisit vote, that was on January 21st, and it was a five-two vote after revisit. Because obviously, we know that we cannot leave a hole in the budget, and there were certainly mandated items that had to be dealt with. And the contract for health insurance went into effect on, on January 1st. This is the order we're going to do this year, we're going to be moved anyways, but we will be dealing with this.
So the nature of the study is?
The nature of the study is look at other communities. See, we're going to go back and look again at the, at the report, we're going to be looking at. We're in a difficult situation, we're a small group, and we understand that we're a small group. And we're a small group, which is made up of aging population within our group, which obviously, in time, we have that type of situation. which obviously, kind of, we have that type of situation, type within health insurance, that's been a factor to the thinking. But the majority of the, uh, of the committee in our original vote felt that we're really dealing with almost an untenable situation on the long term. And so we thought that, you know, it's very easy for a budget committee to say, no, we're not going to do it. We don't agree with you. But that's, that kind of aggregates our responsibility. Our responsibility is say, we're going to make recommendations to the selectmen. We should come up with something to, to back our, our feelings up. And so we are going to do this, and we will commence with this probably, I would like to say sometime in the spring, and look at it over the course of summer, so that in advance of the, of the budget cycle, we can make what we think are our cogent recommendations to the selectmen, and they can, they can take them as they will, or not take them as they will, but we thought we'd do in our part by doing it. Carl?
Yes, um, two questions, actually. Will you be meeting with employees and discussing options with them?
This, I imagine, was part of it.
During the summer, um, to really see how they feel about it? And my other question is, or maybe more of a comment, and, and maybe selectmen or someone can help me with this. My understanding is the policies don't really come out until the fall, which is going to put a little bit of a time crunch on it, um, in regards to options, and I wondered...
Well, as I say, we, we, we as a budget committee can't dictate what the selectmen, what they're going to choose for a, for a plan or offering. All we can do is make recommendations for which, which direction we might want to go. The town might want to go in the future.
Mm-hmm.
As I say, as I said, you could say, I don't, because, you could say to the budget committee, say, I don't like it, I'm not going to vote for it, but that doesn't, that doesn't do the job. That's the easy part. The hard part is to say, oh, we don't like it, but here's a possible solution. And so that's what we're going to be dealing with.
Yeah. No, I hope the employees are involved a little bit in research.
We don't, you know, during all the conversations, I, I try to point out the person speaking as an individual on the budget committee, so I'm not trying to punish people, but this is, uh, we have a, uh, we really have an extraordinary benefits package, which many of us felt does not exist in the real world.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're going to address that.
I can just make a comment on this kind of study. Something like this, of course, was done several years ago, and, uh, one of the faults of that study was it used statistics and, and information from communities that were not in our immediate area. And, uh, I would just respectfully suggest that when this, uh, study is initiated, that we concentrate upon looking at other communities in our closer area, because we're all part of a small community economy, as opposed to what people are earning in Rochester or...
Size and scope is the operative word. All right, we, um, to deal, for us to compare ourselves to a Rochester or a Frank in our country. That's moot. We have, if we're going to do this, we have to look at, you know, towns are similar size, and then, uh, and then go from there.
And we all do deference to our chairman. The heat of the argument came, uh, because if we can sort of disabuse the hyperbole of that comment that the chairman just made, um, the plan that we offer our employees is not a lot grander, if, if grander at all, than other plans throughout the community. It's twenty-one or twenty-two percent of our budget cost is this particular budget. So, and it's a moving target, unlike a lot of the other budgets. But it's, there's a lot of controversy, or there was a lot of controversy at those meetings regarding what was our goal, and I thought our goal was to control cost, but there's more of a goal than that.
I would agree. I think, I think it's important to know where we are, you know, and if we're, we obviously want to be fair. And, uh, and I think that our employees, they live in this area around here, and they're subject to the economy that we're all a part of, so that's an important thing. And then, secondly, um, you know, in some respects, we almost have to ignore the bias that's placed on us by age, by the number of years that employees have been here. I mean, it is what it is, and we, on some of these matters, we just have to pony up. I understand that. But, but certainly, uh, developing an understanding of where we are in a relative sense is very important. So that's, that's just realism that we have to, you know, look at it.
Well, I think it's a good idea that the budget committee is going to get more involved as coming here.
Yeah.
So we can get a position developed, a plan, and we'll come out of that.
Okay. Moving on to forty-one ninety-one, planning and zoning. Last year was seven thousand, twenty-five dollars. This year is ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, this was a six-one vote on October twenty-ninth. The increases are due to increased applications for, uh, for planning purposes, and so the big, the big line item was more hours for the administrative assistant. Uh, it was computer replacement and to work on completion of the master plan, which we have been told will be done in twenty-twenty. I think we're all, we're all aware of the, uh, the ongoing big planning decisions that have been, you know, getting a lot of press, like Farm Hall and that sort of thing. And so, uh, they needed more time for their assistant, and we agreed. Moving on, forty-one ninety-four, general government buildings. Last year was a hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. This year is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two. This was a six-zero vote on January seventh. The big number, uh, this year is going to be to replace, uh, the windows at the town hall. Excuse me, well, this is the townhouse. Town hall. With all, with the exception of the ones in the police department, depending upon what we've been doing down the road on that portion of the building. And that was going to be eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Also, to, uh, another large increase is due to, we're going to seal code all the fires, uh, fire station driveways, and that was sixty-seven hundred dollars. Moving on, forty-one ninety-five, cemetery. Last year it was twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. This year it's twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty. The original vote was seven-zero on, uh, eleven twenty-six.
On that one, the budget committee's number was twenty-nine, nine sixty-one.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. That's the, I was going to get to that. That, the, the number I gave originally was the budget as presented.
Okay.
There was a revisit of this on, uh, January twenty-first to increase that line item to twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Nine hundred and sixty-one.
Pardon?
Nine hundred and sixty-one.
Oh, gee. Sharp eyes, thank you. I appreciate that.
We're not committed.
The reason for the increase was that there was damage done, storm damage done to the, uh, to one of the...
French cemetery.
French cemetery. We received a payment from the insurance company for two thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. Those dollars came in two thousand, twenty thousand nineteen. However, the work cannot be done because of the weather until the spring. Under the advice of the auditors, because the money was not encumbered, they suggested that we increase the budget by that two thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. We have the money in hand already. This is, this is pretty much a bookkeeping. The big number, however, prior to the original vote, was eleven thousand dollars for tree removal and stonework. I have to, I have to say, I stand in abject wonder of the number of cemeteries that we are maintaining in the responsible form of community. And my hat goes up to you and your, and your crew that's trying to do that, but a lot of old cemeteries, a lot of overgrown, a lot of broken stones, a lot of tree stuff that needs to be dealt with, and it's part of our responsibility. And that's the, that was the reason that we approved, uh, that big increase. Any questions on that? Moving on to forty-one ninety-six, insurance. Uh, last year was sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight. This year is seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-six. This was originally brought forth on, uh, on October twenty-ninth and was tabled. It was revisited on, uh, November twelfth with a seven vote, seven-zero vote, uh, in favor. The, uh, the increases are payroll-driven, uh, as far as, uh, and, as well as losses in our group, which factored into the thinking. Also, there's more social security coverage this year than there has been in past years. Okay, forty-one ninety-nine, which is, uh, other general government. Uh, last year was four hundred and seventy-five dollars. This year it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars. This was a seven-zero vote on December tenth. This line item goes for the joint loss, uh, committee made up by town employees to look at, make sure that we are running a safe, uh, workspaces, as well as a printing on the CIP report. Forty-two ten, police department. Last year was four hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight. This year is four hundred and three, six thousand, six hundred and forty-three. This is a six-zero, uh, with one extension vote on November twenty-sixth. The increases were for the overall payroll, conferences, radio equipment, and in cruiser computer equipment, in cruiser being tablets that would allow the police department to do e-ticketing and, who's that one you're...
Oh, it's, uh, communications with the county.
Yeah, no, that was, that's, no, that was, that's...
I thought it was like direct reporting, as opposed to having to go back to the office.
Yes, e-ticket, e-ticketing does everything online, so it's just a...
I think the other side, it reports exact part where the things are in there.
Yes.
They already...
That's why you get the big ones. Moving on to forty-two fifteen, ambulance. Last year was a hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. This year is a hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. It was a seven-zero vote on December third. Uh, this is a one-year contract with Stewards Ambulance, maintaining everything as we had done in the past. It's a one-point-four percent increase. Moving on, forty-two twenty, firefighter. Last year was four hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eight. This year is four hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred dollars. This was a six-zero vote on November twelfth. The, the ploneness of the increases this year were increases in firefighters, firefighters on balance, uh, in shift coverage, certain amount of computer replacement, as well as purchasing turnout gear for new firefighters, as well as somebody's existing numbers. The, uh, the chief did point out to us that, uh, that turnout equipment is very, very expensive. Every year that, when the number comes up on the town, you think about how much it costs, actually, to help, to remember to go out and fight a fire for us, and that, uh, he's very, very careful about who he will approve to the fire department, to make sure that we're not, uh, spending a lot of money on equipment for people who don't intend to be there for a bit. Okay, moving on, forty-two forty, building inspection. Uh, sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars this year, oh, shoot, last year. This year is sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. This was a five-zero, one extension vote on October first, and these are the expenses for the code op, code enforcement officer, as well as the, uh, as well as the ancillary Line item forty-two ninety, emergency management. Last year was fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. This year is eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. This is a six-zero vote on January seventh. Uh, these represent increases in, uh, generator maintenance, because first of all, our town buildings now have their own standalone generators, uh, as well as emergency E-line, which is a new item to, uh, maintain repeaters for the Carroll County, uh, to keep up with the police and the fire department in line with Carroll County dispatch. Forty-three twelve, highways and streets. Last year was five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. This year is five hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars. This is a five-one vote on November twelfth. Notable increases this year are road mowing, spring and fall maintenance. Much of the work that would have been done last year, uh, in the spring and the fall have been postponed because of the enormous amount of, uh, winter maintenance costs that we had. The road agent forced all the work that would have been done so as not to go over his approved Number forty-three thirteen, other highways and streets. Last year was sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. This year it's thirty-five hundred dollars. This was a six-zero vote on, uh, January seventh. The reason for the drop is that the engineering work for, uh, Union Wharf at Lake Street has been done in two thousand and nineteen. Future expenses involved with these projects will be dealt with with a warrant article. Very well, forty-three twenty-four, solid waste. Last year was four hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. This year it's four hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-one. This was a six-zero vote on January seventh. Bill of increases this year with the increase in stump removal due to disposal costs. Revenue from the, uh, from saw waste facility last year was a hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, as well as the avoided cost, which, uh, was thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars across all lines. And I commend, uh, I commend client and staff for doing as quick as you can to increase those avoided costs. Forty-one forty-four, animal control. Last year was seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. This year is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. This was a seven-zero vote on December tenth. This is animal control for, uh, potentially having to deal with, uh, lost stray dogs, whatever, and by and large, feed rates of late creatures major status. Forty-four fifteen, health agencies. Last year was forty thousand and one dollar. This year is forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. This is a seven-zero vote on October twenty-ninth. These are the health and human services, uh, groups that are serving members of the community. One of the increases this year was an increase in the sixty-eight hours of underline. I felt they were, have been a little bit unfunded in their opinion in the past, and we agree to them. We want to make sure that people understand that this is, it's not given out randomly on an ongoing basis. Every year, these organizations have to apply to the selectmen and be approved before it comes to us. If they say the work that they, the services they give to me, I think if money goes down... Forty-four forty-two, direct assistance. Forty-four-forty-two, assistance. Last year was twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This year is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, so it's level funded. It was a six-zero vote on October first. Although if you look at the line items, you'll see that the two thousand nineteen requests for these services were all of low. Now, the selectmen anticipate that the two twenty, two thousand twenty needs are going to be, are anticipated to increase, which is why we agree with the number. Number forty-five-twenty, parks and recreation. Last year was fifty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. This year is fifty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-six. This was a six-one vote on October, on October twenty-ninth. It's four thousand dollars less than the selectmen's budget request because we eliminated a, a request for a storage shed. The increase in salary lineups due to increased hours on the part of the director of Parks and Rec. This was partially offset by eliminating the swim coach stipend because that, the swim team is going to be melded into the, into hopefully into Wolfboro. I find it interesting every year as a taxpayer of both Wolfboro and Tuckton Borough to see the sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollar line item, which is given to Wolfboro and help pay for their parks and recreation programs, which all children in Tuckton Borough take, have the advantage, or have the ability to take advantage of. I just have to say that whichever bargain comes to town, Tuckton Borough has sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Our children do very well for that amount of money. Moving on, forty-five-fifty, the library. Last year was twenty-seven, two hundred and seventeen thousand seventy-nine dollars. This year is two hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and four dollars. This was a six-one vote on October twenty-ninth. The increase is largely based on the anticipated higher utility costs for the new building as well as some computer replacement. The gross budget as presented is anticipated to be offset, as it is every year, by, we think of this year as going to be sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars in gifts and donations, other than any money that comes in for the capital campaign for the building, which is still ongoing. And we still, believe it or not, have money coming in for the building, which is obviously well under construction. The nice part about that is those dollars will be spent before we have to go into the approved tax dollars to be approved and that will be paid on me. The library people are still doing their part. Forty-five-eighty-three, patriotic purposes. Fifteen hundred dollars last year, fifteen hundred dollars this year. This is a six-zero vote on October first. This supports it for cemetery flags and other patriotic purposes in the town. Forty-five-eighty-nine, which is gifted donations. Last year, five hundred dollars. This year, five hundred dollars. Once again, a six-zero vote on October first. This line item is for acknowledgement for people who have served in the community, perhaps a gift in somebody's memory if somebody had passed. Number forty-six-twelve, conservation. Last year, sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. This year, twenty-four thousand twenty dollars. This was a seven-zero vote on December third. The big increase was for the hours for administrative assistant as paperwork for, for the conservation commission, application for grants, just doing everything in general has become, really increased dramatically to the point where it's past a totally volunteer situation. And that is why they put in a request for administrative hours. During the course of the discussion, Chip pointed out to us, and once again, I didn't realize, that fifty percent of the town property in Tuckton Borough is either under easement or current use. And I found that to be astounding, obviously. We all know there's an awful lot of land out there that would say, well, who owns it? What are they doing with it? Now we know, but that's a, that's a big number.
And they did run over the last year. The conservation did run over the budget last year.
Forty-six-nineteen, other conservation. Last year, excuse me, last year was twenty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. This year is eighty-one hundred dollars. This was a seven-zero vote on December tenth. The reason for the large drop is that there's an unknown amount on a year-to-year basis for milfoil mitigation. And the selectmen have, have often, rather than put money in that's not going to be spent, that the anticipated cost will be dealt with with an expendable trust more article, which we'll be discussing after we get through with the budget. That's the reason for the large drop. Forty-seven-eleven, long-term bonds and debts. A hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars. This is the same as last year. There's a six-zero vote on October first. This is simply the outstanding mortgage on the fire station. And forty-seven-twenty-one, which is long-term interest. Last year was thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. This year is thirty thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. This was a six-zero vote on October first. And this is the interest of the previously mentioned mortgage we have on the fire station. And every year, that, that number will, of course, will be reducing as we get closer to paying it off. And that.
Just one important comment, according to November ten on the planning, the forty-one ninety-one. I think the numbers you referenced were just for the add-on line.
Forty-one ninety-one?
Yeah.
Okay, you've got the first line, two, and the total line. Planning is done.
Forty-one ninety-one, planning is done?
Yeah, I think he admitted the seven-zero two-five versus the ten-nine-nine two. But that was just for the administrative system line.
Yeah.
It's just not the old line.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, it's been a nice, let it go.
What's the question?
Okay, it should be, the farther number should be twenty-one, one-seventy-one.
Forty-one ninety-one. Twenty-one, I'm sorry.
One-seventy-one. And this year should be twenty-six, six-seven, three.
I apologize. As I said, lots of middle numbers, and as far as I say, it has been four.
Thank you, Karen.
I apologize for that. However, the lines are reasonably aligned of vote, and the vote itself did not change. And so that is the explanation of all the bottom line.
Bottom line, about the big fifteen.
All right, with that in mind, our total operating budget for twenty-twenty is four million one hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars versus last year of four million fifty thousand dollars three oh seven. And I would entertain a motion on the part of the budget committee to accept that.
So move, I'll second that.
Let's remove the second. Do we have any further discussion on the operating budget?
I believe the proper procedure is to continue with the hearing and then adjourn the hearing and come back into our meeting to vote on the operating budget, but I'm not so sure of that. I believe it was pointed out last year by someone slightly biased that we need to do it that way. I need my name in all. Simply a matter of doing it the way the state wants it done.
You're the parliamentarian.
Well, vote if you'd like to.
Is that because we should discuss not just the operating, but we should get into the warrants and then, and then come back to the, to the operating budget?
I will digress to the role of the, to the role of.
It's, you're in the public hearing.
Yes.
And to have that vote, you need to close the public hearing and do the vote. Then you reopen that for the next subject. Either that or do all of the subjects in one public hearing, then come back and close the hearing and vote.
Go to executive. We need to close the public hearing, go to executive to vote.
Well, no, it's not executive vote. It's just, the public hearing gets closed before you vote is the.
We can't vote during the public hearing.
It's the normal procedure.
My apologies. Problems? So we will not be having our vote right now, but we'll be then moving on to discussion of the warrant article, the public benefit. A sip of water, a bit proceeded, we go warrant article. Article one, of course, is election of officers, so we'll move on to article two, which will be to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to purchase and equip a new police cruiser. This was recommended by the Board of Selectmen two to one and by the Budget Committee four to three. There was extensive discussion about whether we needed to have a new, a new cruiser at this time because of the age of some of the other equipment and mileage of some of the equipment, but the votes were as presented.
And the selectmen need to remind the public that we had a police cruiser on the CIP list for last year. We didn't, didn't do that purchase last year, given the library project that was kind of poor. And so this police cruiser was due for replacement a year ago.
And also, this, the usage on the cruisers last year was down because fewer police officers, but he also wants to keep one extra cruiser as a backup.
Yeah, we're still talking about that, but, but he does have a full slate of officers now that he's got. The new officers.
It just seems a shame if they went to public at the town meeting with that kind of a split on the budget committee. Way to resolve it, maybe better than what three.
Well, same split pretty much as the selectmen. It's an ongoing discussion.
If, if he didn't keep one cruiser in the whole, what's the lead time on a corner and one quickly if need to be, in other words, if you.
Well, they all come from, they all come through the state bidding process.
Yeah. A long delay or short.
Well, if he gets this approved at town meeting, he won't have the cruiser in service much before June. So it's going to take two or three months to get the, get a.
Seems like we're open to a lot of discussion in town meeting on this one summer.
Well, we can't present consensus every time.
Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the preparation and paving of town roads. This was a three vote, three-zero vote by the selectmen, seven-zero vote by the Budget I do this the old days, a special for tar.
Nobody bothers that.
Night has moved past me by, I've seen a lot of different things.
This is a slight increase over last year's paving budget, and we're going to continue to ratchet that up a little bit.
Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand dollars to make roadway drainage improvements on Federal Corner Road, Ledgehill Road, and Shirley Way. The full amount will come from municipal aid. This will be a three vote by the selectmen and a seven-zero vote by the Budget Committee.
What exactly can you do with that little amount of money on those three roads?
What we're looking to do is prepare them for a larger construction project a year, coming year or two years. Fixing culverts, laying out drainage, and especially looking at the top of Ledgehill Road, for instance, try to shed the water into, into the ditch lines, getting those cleaned out. The same with Federal Corner. There's going to have to be another culvert put in up there because it floods in the springtime. Shirley Ways.
I mean, Ledgehill Road is.
This is going to be in conjunction with.
Falling apart.
Right, this is going to be in conjunction with, right, but we just can't pave that, I guess.
I know.
We need to, we need to correct the underlying problems, which is water getting under the road primarily.
Right, and I think one of the issues that I met with the selectmen numerous times complaining about the maintenance of the shoulders and the ditches. Basically, shoulder maintenance is non-existent. You have to do that to get the most life out of the road surface itself. Nobody seems to understand that anymore.
Well, I think that's maybe a step too far. We understand it. It's a matter of getting it done. This is a step towards that. This is going to be in conjunction with some money that's already in the road budget. So his focus is going to be on those three roads as well as the paving on Dane and North Farm.
Where is he going to pave on Dane? Have you driven over it lately? It's horrible.
Oh, you're welcome to amend this warrant article to read a larger number, but we're getting thirty-four thousand direct highway aid.
Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise, to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand dollars for the second and final phase of the nineteen-mile Bay Beach Improvement Project. This was a three vote by the selectmen, seven-zero vote by the Budget Committee. This will be a two, obviously to complete the readout on nineteen mile beach.
And this has been bid, and so this is the, I think the cost is just a bit lower than that, but not by much. That work should be done by time people go through. If it passes, time to get.
Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-four thousand dollars to purchase a new trash compactor for the transfer station. This is a three vote vote by the selectmen, seven-zero vote by the Budget Committee. This is obviously just to replace a piece of equipment that's on its last legs.
And how old is the one that's currently there?
Twenty-two years.
So it's twenty-two years old.
I don't think others hang on.
The compact and trash, what was your?
Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to purchase a vertical bailout for the transfer station. Once again, it was a three-zero vote by the selectmen, seven-zero vote by the Budget Committee. This is, this is to bail up all of your cardboard that are ready to ship out.
Once again, a twenty-year.
They're always wanted to light blue when they're, but they don't fill them anymore. To replace that piston costs almost as much as any mission. And you only get three months more. Okay, article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand. Well, one should be $124,625 to pay a third installment towards the fire truck acquired in 2018, as approved by voters pursuant to article six of the 2018 town meeting. The principal sum of $111,043 and the interest of $12,782. The amount, this is a five-year lease agreement and it contains an escape clause. Three vote vote by the selectmen, seven zero vote by the Budget Committee. Article nine. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $89,318 to pay a fifth and final installment towards the ambulance vehicle and rescue truck acquired in 2016, as approved by voters pursuant to articles six and seven of the 2016 town meeting. The principal amount of $87,105 and the interest of $22,00, excuse me, $2,213. This five-year lease agreement does contain an escape clause. Three vote by the selectmen, seven zero vote by the Budget Committee. This will be the final year of it. And now on our rankings. Article 10, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be deposited to the previously established Mill Foil Expendable Trust Fund. Three zero by the selectmen, seven zero by the Budget Committee. This is what I was alluding to earlier, why we took money out of other conservation because never knowing what the, what portion or how much money is going to be spent mitigating for the Mill Foil every year. The selectmen decided we better put a money into a trust fund that they can expand as needed rather than raising appropriate money only not to see go back into the unexpended fund balance at the end of the year. Article 11, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $27,000 to the add to the previously established Fire Rescue Department Self-Containment Breathing Apparatus Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. This was a two, one vote by the selectmen and a six to zero vote by the Budget Committee. There was a question as to how much money is in the fund versus how many more years will we put any money in this until it will be expended? And Helen told us earlier that we're looking at 21 or 22. 22 is where it's anticipated, that all things being equal.
Was it 2022 when they're finding? Oh.
Actually.
Sorry, Dan.
I don't think I have...
The SCBA one?
I don't think I have the capital improvement book with me, but I'm pretty sure that it's 2022. Think that they were looking at putting $27,000 this year and not 27,000 or a little bit more next year.
The object of the endeavor is that by 20, by 2022, there will be enough money in that, in that capital reserve fund so that we'll be able to purchase equipment without needing to raise and appropriate any money for that. Article 12, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $14,000 to purchase two new town sanders. This is a three vote vote by the selectmen and a six one vote by the Budget Committee. Talk about that, Andrew.
Once again, these are sanders that are getting close to 20 years old. One is in constant need of repair. But we do need to replace these two sanders that we use for winter maintenance.
Article 13, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $54,000 for development of architectural plans and cost estimate to build the new police facility. This is a three vote vote by the selectmen and a six one vote by the Budget Committee.
We're going to have the architects in for the town meeting with elevations and floor pan plans to illustrate the type of facility that we're planning. It isn't a final design. And what we need to do in 2020 is come up with a final design. We'll have some more public meetings on it as well as put it out for cost estimates so we can have a firm figure for coming forward in 2021 for replacing the police facility. Article 22.
Do you have a location for her?
The location that's been chosen is the, I hope you're going along, across from the library. Best sightlines, close to the school.
You may remember that as Leon Dua property. I do.
No, I don't know that.
The John Tufton Mason piece.
Will that be the same lines of the lottery that we may have enough money in on the capital product side of things that we don't have to bond it?
The next article is going to put some money in the capital reserve. We do have some money in it. I think we have $150,000 currently in a reserve fund. We may want to look at 22. I hate to go out to as far as 23, but we may, we may want to have the discussion whether or not to keep putting money in savings and pay for it as we did the library as opposed to bonding. But that's a discussion for later.
Keep in mind, too, that now she's Mona from heaven coming for the police.
We don't get a lot of money at bake sales from the police.
Yeah, exactly.
But I have to say that isn't going to change. We're picking fruit sales.
Okay, article 14. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be added to the previously established Police Facility Capital Reserve Fund. This is a three vote by the selectmen and a six one vote by the Budget Committee. This chip was just the goodie to us, just putting more money in the capital reserve fund so that at the time of construction, we don't have that kind of tax impact.
Our, our goal, or the selectmen's goal, although we don't agree with the Budget Committee's budget completely, is to do flat budgeting in 2020, push down the tax rate a little bit in October with money coming out of the undistinguished fund balance, but continually accumulating some capital so that we can do these projects for cash.
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, on what the unfunded balance will be after we've done with that.
Well, it's $967,000 right now.
That would just stay, basically stay the same?
No, it's going to go down.
Or down with it.
I mean, it goes up every year. I've spent money in the budgets.
Right, if you're going to protect them.
So, but I don't know that we need to have what amounts to 25% of our operating budget in savings. I think 15% or 10% is workable, but I don't see it. And we haven't had this discussion, so I'm just speaking from chips.
I understand.
I, I can see maybe 200 or 300,000 coming out at the most. Because we want to save some also for, and I could go on and on.
Yeah.
We want to save some for when we have a downturn in the economies because unlike everybody in this room's view that this bear market's going to last forever, the bull market, we're going to have a downturn. We're going to have to moderate the tax.
Yeah.
Bring this down.
Get back up today. Article 15, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000. Do update perambulation reports with Moulton Borough, Wolfborough, and Ausby Calanines. The special warrant article will be non-lapsed in appropriation for RSA 37:7, comma, 6, and will not lapse until the perambulation is completed or by December 31st, 2022, whichever sooner. This is a 30, a three zero vote by the selectmen, seven zero vote by the, by the Budget Committee.
We haven't had a perambulation done in quite a while. There's a movement afoot in Concord to eliminate the need for perambulations. It's the Board of Selectmen's feeling that we should at least have one good sat nav-based perambulation done, even if they do decide in Concord that we don't need to have them done anymore. So that's, this is, would be our portion of the line. So Moulton Borough would pay half, we'd pay half, Ausby would pay half, and Luke would pay half, and Wolfborough would pay half. So our estimation is it costs $5,000.
Okay, article 16. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,000 for costs associated with acquiring a conservation easement on properties of budding Mirror Lake. The special warrant article will be a non-lapsed appropriation for RSA 32:7, number 6, and will not lapse until easements are conveyed to town or by December 31st, 2022, whichever sooner. This was recommended by the Board of Selectmen 30 and by the Budget Committee 52. This is a piece of property that the Conservation Committee has, has their eyes on, which will, which will go the long way to helping conserve the Mirror Lake watershed. They are in the process of trying to ascertain what kind of grants are going to be available to pay for it. But this is the funding that's going to be needed to get that, that kind of grant writing and money applications going.
What's the size of this property?
Every front?
What's the size of it?
125 acres. And there is a letter of intent by the landowner that's been signed and delivered to the Conservation Commission. The, this is an estimate of, of the front-end costs. Some of this money could very well come back to the town once the grants are done. But this is what the Conservation Commission felt they needed to go forward with this. So it's the former Hersi property at the eastern end of Mirror Lake.
And also, who's a piece of, part of the property is also in town, Wolfborough. So they're going to, that might have to be addressed by that. But this is for our portion of it, or a total proportion of it, excuse me.
So we would hold the easement?
Yeah. On the, on the Tufton Borough side.
Yeah.
Wolfborough would hold the easement on that Wolfborough. Yeah, Amanda to re-manage the Wolfborough side of the easement as well. So it's all sort of moving at this point.
I see.
But at least we've got a commitment from the landowner and Steve and the Conservation Commissioner getting the plan together.
Article 17, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 for permitting fees and design for repairs to community wharf. This was a three zero vote by the selectmen and a six to zero vote by the Budget Committee, which was on the scene. And as we alluded to earlier, as Chip was discussing, work to be done, but there's still going to be done, money that's going to be needed for the permitting of that work prior to any decision being made by the town, if we want to go on.
There's estate permitting, there's more design work to be done. We're still talking about whether or not to do a grant and write application to the council. That's a moving target as well.
Article 18. To see the town will vote to discontinue the Library Capital Reserve Fund created in 2010. Said funds with a humanitarian interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred to the municipality's general fund. This was a three zero vote on the part of the selectmen and seven zero vote by the Budget Committee. As of the last time I looked, I think it was 48, it was $48 and change left to the capital reserve fund for the town because how the work herefore has been funded was the original money came out of the existing capital reserve fund. We are now working on all the donated money on the part of the capital campaign committee. When that money is exhausted, then we'll be going into money that was appropriated at last year's town meeting, which was $330,000. I can give you as an aside that we are a little bit ahead of schedule and we are on budget, so.
And it was impossible to withdraw the money exactly to the, to zero because of the way it's held. It's constantly accumulating, so we should just clean that out.
That $48 is going to go all the way. Article 19, to see the town will vote to establish a 19 Mile Brook Expendable Trust Fund per RSA 31:9-A.
19.
19, excuse me, for the purpose of monitoring water quality of the 19 Mile Brook watershed with its terminus at 19 Mile Bay, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to put in the fund, further to name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This was a three vote on the part of the selectmen, seven zero vote by the Budget Committee.
Last year, as you probably remember, we had a warrant article to do the water testing at 19 Mile Brook. We finally got the final report on Monday of this week. So we didn't have the final report in time to do an actual allocation of funds or a warrant article. That, as well as our feeling that we needed to look at the, and have the Conservation Commission and other folks look at the study that was done in 2019 and establish some benchmarks and criteria going forward, and then put up, put out an RFP that will accomplish that. So rather than writing a warrant article for an amount of money we don't know, we elected to start a revolving trust fund or capital reserve fund so that going forward, we're going to take money out of that, put one here, and monitor 19 Mile Brook. The other, and this is still hearsay, but our Conservation Commissioner was in conversation with Wolfborough's, one of the borough's selectmen, about maybe participating, participating in this water quality study. So we'll see how that plays out as well.
Just as a point of information, I think that was discussed a long time ago about having some participation.
Yeah, it's a matter of getting them to agree with it. That's sticking to me.
Article 21. To see the town will vote to establish contingency fund for the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further, to raise and appropriate $5,000 to put in the fund. Said sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Any appropriation left at the end of the fund year will lapse into the general fund. This is recommended by the selectmen 30 and by the Budget Committee 70.
This is an article that's been on the work for a few years. We haven't, well, while I've been a selectman, we haven't used this, but it's a small amount of money that's available if we do have an emergency of some form that needs instant cash.
Article 22. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee-recommended sum of $4,118,248 for general town operations. The selectmen recommended $4,120,637. This article does not include any special or individual warrant articles. And we'll be voting this concluding.
Before you continue with that vote, looking back at article 13, to raise and appropriate the sum of $54,000 for development of the architectural plans, is that for the fire or the police department? Is that going to take place in 2020?
It is.
And will Board of, I don't see here that it says Board of Selectmen are agents to expend, so.
It's not a special fund.
It's not a special fund? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, all of these, all of these warrant articles have been sent to DNR, so what we're... we have to do.
With preference to Carl's question, will there be a one item in that architectural design study to reconfigure or rehab the office space that's in the town office building? In other words, when the police move out, that space will be used for something.
Right.
And I don't know how functionally obsolescent it is, it may not be, I mean, someone may be able to just move into, but is there any consideration to at least looking at some of the downside costs might be?
I think that's going to be part of the ongoing conversation. We haven't got to that point yet.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure we're not going to tear that part of the building down.
No, I didn't mean that.
It probably won't leave a vacant, it'll be used for some purpose.
Yeah.
And, I mean, currently we have parks and rec upstairs in the town office building. Maybe they need to move downstairs, but the planning board really needs a permanent space. I mean, if right there going, they're going to need a legal team on board, but, so there's all, all kinds of different uses for the space that really don't involve a lot of money, but would make the town operations a little more efficient.
Right.
And it will be part of this discussion, I'm sure.
All right, that concludes all of our warrant articles. While I was part of the hearing, we'll be discussing briefly the five year operating actual budget history graph. And I will, we've briefly discussed it during our regular budget meeting before the hearing. And Carl is the queen of graphs. The developed series, thankfully.
And the king of graphs.
Would you like to address this?
On, on the graphs, I use the actual numbers that were of the expenses for the years 2016 through 2019 and compare those to the budget for 2020. Of course, Gordon, when we talked about it, compared budget to budget. So what we're looking at is an increase of 5% in the budget over the actual expenditures of 2019. And if you look at the five years, with the exception of the highway department, everybody has just continued to pick up a little bit, mostly because of increases in payroll, just and other expenses. Executive and financial administration stayed flat, they're actually down just slightly. Can I talk about this year?
Please.
Then this year, visually looking at where do we spend your tax money? What services do you get for your tax money? The largest part goes to the fire department. Then we provide police coverage, the transfer station, and the maintenance of the highways. The executive and financial admin is the cost of operating the town. It's, one of the largest items in there is the property and casualty insurance, but it includes the cost of the selectmen videotaping meetings, tax map. It includes the, the auditors under the outside contracts. It includes the assessor for the properties under the outside contracts. And we vote. And then if you look by type, salaries and benefits is 50%. Administrative costs are the next highest item, and then outside contracts and maintenance. So I just, when I joined the budget committee, I just wanted, I, it's easier for me to look visually than it is to just building all the numbers, so.
I have no idea the level of appreciation that you have received from us over the years.
So they're not substantially different than they have been in the past, but.
Any questions, Carl? Okay, moving on to estimated revenue for this year, 2020. We're looking at an estimated revenue of $1,261,900, which is less than last year. Want to talk about that, would you?
It's $45,913 less where I came off of in my instant calculations. The biggest change is being the land use change tax, which was at $55,000 last year, I believe. And pilot, payment of taxes went down a bit. And it was a little harder to parse out the changes because the library capital reserves came in as, as money as revenue last year. So it's a little harder to follow. Department income stayed about the same. And I think we dropped interest as well down.
The betterment easement expired. The betterment easement expired.
Oh, right, and the betterment easement expired. That was the Zadi Da, the old project that we're getting paid back, having done, done the work and the property and this will pay it back. So as you can, did you all get a copy of the estimated revenue sheet?
Yep.
Okay, so you can see at the bottom there, it's the remaining unfunded, unreserved unbalances, 967, 554, which is up a bit from last year. And we, I'll do one last thing. Where it says reduce taxes, that would be under, just below net revenues, we don't do that until October, when we set the tax rate, so that we don't put that one in here.
Before I conclude the hearing, I'd also like to make note of the fact that on the warrant article, in addition to the money articles we've been discussing already, there are going to be two petition warrant articles, the Rose, the acceptance of Rose, one for Willand Road, and the other one for Farm Pond Road, that we have, we discussed, certainly the selecting stuff at their level, we discussed briefly at the budget committee level. Neither one, neither one of them have been brought forward with recommendations because of some wording issues on the Willand Road article, which is what we need to address. And that can be, that can be obviously dealt with by the, by the governing body at the town meeting, they chose to do it based on, perhaps rebound wording. That was the reason that one was not dealt with by the selectmen. Farm Pond Road was not being dealt with because the selectmen did not want to have a feeling of not being fair. Those were the ones that did it, but not the other. I'm not speaking out of turn for the selectmen, please tell me.
No, I think the selectmen are both, are in favor of both projects conditionally. And on the Farm Pond Road warrant article, it states the condition on the Willand Road deposit, although the Willand Road petitioners have been in and agreed to whatever conditions we need to set within reason, it just goes in on the warrant articles we have, but we're addressing that at town meeting.
Well, that, pending any questions on the part of the folks here, I'm going to conclude the official budget hearing, and then we'll reconvene our regular budget meeting. And I will entertain a motion by the budget committee to accept the proposed operating budget presented by the budget committee for this year for $4,118,248.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion on this? All right, none forthcoming, then. Those in favor of the motion? Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Where'd you go? So that's a, that's a 4-2? Because, all right.
I'm, I have to vote no, because the selectmen's budget is different. And I've already voted on that budget, so.
Okay.
I don't know what guys, please do.
So. Any other business before the?
Did it say that because of, like a conflict for you, or is that the idea?
Me?
Yeah.
I've already voted on the selectmen's budget, or only $4,120,000, I'm going to stand by that, because at the town meeting, we're going to present that number as a selectmen's budget, let the town.
So maybe we should just abstain?
Right, abstain? Why that, that's just being, that's being a bit gutless. I'm happy to vote against the.
I think you're worried too, can I understand that, currently, I just think.
I think the most, more appropriate budget is the selectmen's budget. So I couldn't abstain in good conscience.
Any other business we don't?
Yes, I do have some business for the committee. In 2014, Gary Thornton gave us a wonderful report, and I've been pretty much forward against the gospel. I took delivery of making copies of a couple of pages of that report for everyone. Those pages say that towns and us, do and be require their employees to participate in the payment of their health insurance premiums, and recommends that we develop a program, and talks about percentages, what goes on, and just something that you folks can peruse until the committee meets again to discuss this.
Thank you very much, Guy, but the, the overall report did say that we were not overly or underly, we were kind of in the middle of how we treated our employees.
Read the pages, and it talks about that, yes, it does. And also recommends that we do so.
Thank you for the paperwork. Moving with that, ladies and gentlemen, I think that concludes our business for the evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Move to second. Move the paper, aye?
Aye.
Thank you for coming out, Michelle.
Make sure you all come to town meeting.